All trustees, with the exception of trustee Ursink, are present this evening. We've one, we have a budget wrap-up discussion on our agenda. And there is a memo in our packet asking for direction. But I will hold, I will pass to Director Johnson to pose the questions. Provide direction on budget and finance? Oh, this is Villa, I'm sorry, this is manager Ewald, apologies.
No problem. I'm just trying to come off mute.
Okay.
Is it acceptable to run down the memo and the questions and recommendations from finance?
Okay. What I was hoping for.
Okay, then let's start. The first question was can we bond for the Village Center AC improvements? The response is no, however, we could do a 10-year note. The Budget and Finance Committee recommended that those improvements be funded within the capital budget for 2024. This saves on interest costs for financing the improvements over a 10-year term, but it also defers plow truck number 59 and other requested items for funding. At this time, looking for direction from the board as to whether they agree with the Budget and Finance Committee recommendation?
So thumbs up or questions?
Okay, don't have kudo, oh, there we go, Stoke Brandon, Arndorfer.
There's a committee, so unless they've changed their mind.
Okay.
I think we're good. And trustee Lynn?
Great. Two items that were not located within the capital budget that are now included and referenced on your sheet is $5,000 for the Milwaukee County Safe Streets For All commitment with the county and the amount of $5,000 and a 20% match, which equates to $10,000 for a demonstration activity, which is a grant, a subset of the Safe Streets For All in the amount of $10,000. Those were also recommended to be funded in the capital budget by the Budget and Finance Committee at their last meeting by a show of thumbs up, looking for general consensus from the board to proceed with those being included. Trustee Stoke Brandon raised her hand. Is that a, that's a yes, right?
I just wanted to say that, you know, looking back, if we hadn't already made the $5,000 commitment to the county and the $10,000 for this, you know, it's not really meeting any of our immediate needs, which we've heard from residents, is West Capital Drive. But because we made earlier decisions, I'm willing to support this.
Thank you. Trustee Mar Baldoff, were you able to indicate? Did we lose her?
No, she's here, she gave a thumbs up.
Great, all right, thanks.
I just, my dog was barking, so I was just trying to stay on you.
Okay, um, thank you, moving on.
Moving on. We have the EAB tree removal. It is unfunded currently within the capital budget. The Budget and Finance Committee recommended that the EAB tree removal be funded at the level of $75,000 and that the current EAB policy be applied to Lake Drive roadway construction. For purposes of this meeting tonight, the board's requested to provide direction on funding of the EAB tree removal, the matter of applying the current EAB policy to Lake Drive roadway construction. We'll come back to the board for consideration prior to the end of 2023. So at this point, I'm looking for a thumbs up or no hand signal, which is gonna be a thumbs down for funding $75,000 for EAB tree removal in the capital budget.
Okay, and it was the recommendation of Budget and Finance to fund it?
Yes.
I can support that?
Police Department Capital.
Stoke Brandon, was that a thumbs up? Your hand is raised.
I had a question about, so there's a possibility, if I'm, if I read this correctly, that we could, we could do the $75,000 and just continue with Emerald Ash Bore program throughout the village. Or we could also look to have the trees on Lake Drive removed through a bond, or am I misunderstanding that later? But the year would have to be 2024, because it's gonna be redone in 2025 and it only makes financial sense to do it the year before.
I'm not aware of a bonding option for this.
So the recommendation was to fund it as a part of the capital budget. If the trees need to be, and if the board chooses at a later date to apply the current EAB policy to Lake Drive, they will need to be taken down in year 2024. So funding, some of the funding would be utilized for that, reason being is that WISDOT will not allow for trees to be sculpted within their contract. So whether you use them on Lake Drive and other trees in the village, the amount right now that we're securing is $75,000 from the capital fund.
Right, or borrowed for and funded by bond proceeds from the Lake Drive project, so then it would happen after 2025, is that correct? So you can, we can allocate $75,000 now, or fund by bond proceeds from the Lake Drive project after it's all done, is that?
Well, you haven't.
Page six of the.
Yeah, so you won't be doing road construction at that time. The road construction would have been done, and typically when we fund that removal, it's, it's in conjunction with, and deemed to be classified as a part of the roadway construction.
Okay, so I guess my question here then is, are you looking for direction of all the, if we commit the $75,000, the extra capital improvement cost, and we say yes, those 21 ash trees on Lake Drive should be part of the $75,000 allocation, is that correct, in 2024?
No, the only decision that I'm requesting tonight is whether the board decides would like to fund EAB removal in 2024 at the amount of 20, or $75,000. At a later meeting, I will come back to the board and then we'll have a closing discussion on how the funds are utilized in 2024. And it's our intention to have that discussion with the board prior to the end of 2023.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I can support this for $75,000.
Okay. Moving on. To Police Department Capital, the Budget and Finance Committee recommended utilization of the $10,800 in grant funding for the Police Department protective gear and then utilizing ARPA for the balance of the dollars required. Thumbs up?
Thumbs up. Okay, I think we have directions.
Baldoff? I think was the only one I'm waiting for, but I.
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. Then we have Zoom.
So what was the outcome of the committee?
True, two trustees favored Zoom, one was indifferent. Zoom Pro, which would be a total of $300 a year, allows up to 100 participants under two minimum users required, was the amount of $300, and then Zoom Business is a total of $4,000 a year and would allow up to 300 participants in those meetings. There was also, I want to give Assistant Village Anderson a lot of credit for the write-up that he did within the scope of the packet relative to Zoom, because he's been really closely familiar with it. I don't feel the need to go through all of that with you in detail unless you'd like us to, and if so, let us know.
I, yeah, so I do not, I feel like we're making progress with teams and I don't, I'd like that it isn't a limit. It's very rare that we would have that many people, or we would exceed 100 virtually, however, it has occurred. And so I like that there's no limit with teams. Show of thumbs up or questions?
I'm not entirely interested in switching back to Zoom, but.
So basically, we're looking for, we would need a majority of thumbs up at this point to have it move forward. So trustee Stoke Brandon, I know that you're in support of it, unless your hand is raised?
Can I talk?
Yes.
Okay, so my point is, we still have Microsoft Teams, whether or not you approve the $300 or not. The point is, we're not meeting in Village Hall, we don't know when we're meeting in Village Hall again. There are people who have trouble getting onto Teams, and I think for one more year, while we get up to speed, we've heard a lot about the learning curve with Teams. I think for one year, a $300 payment to make it easier for people to sign into meetings is a good idea.
Thank you.
So I mean, yes.
Right, so, so show of thumbs up in support?
I mean, I'll just, can I just say something real quick?
Oh, sure.
I was just, I, I was in favor of going to Zoom because frankly, maybe with the exception of the closed-door session we just had, we have had problems with Teams on every single meeting that we have done. Whether it's committee, or like people can't get on, or people can't hear, or it's not working correctly, or, and Zoom is, you know, as far as I'm concerned, has taken care of all those issues, so I'm, you know, I'm just about ease of use, and Zoom seems to be the easiest thing for everyone to use, and it always seems to work. So that was my, my point embodied towards Zoom.
So right now, I have Kudo and Stoke Brandon favoring Zoom.
I'm fine to, to spend 300 bucks on Zoom. I know that, I know that Teams can be challenging for some people to get logged onto, I've dealt with that with a different board that I'm a part of, that some people have had some challenges with Teams, so I'm comfortable with, with, you know, the expense, so long as it's not, you know, gonna be something that's a really big hassle for staff.
It's definitely more work. I just didn't realize that every single meeting, we have people who can't get on.
And I will say, from my, I mean, from my experience right now, I'm not, I'm in one twentieth of the meetings that, you know, staff are in with this, but there always seems to be an issue with Teams. Someone can't get in, someone can't get off mute, someone, you know, it's not working correctly, it's, you know, I'll try to mute you from here, or unmute you from here, and you try to unmute yourself, or you go back out, you come back in, it just, we don't have any of those issues. There's been plenty of meetings even back, you know, when we were in person, when we were recording and we were on Teams and where it just wasn't working, right? And it, and we start meetings late and people can't get in. Zoom just seems to be, right now, for whatever reason, the easiest way for us to communicate with the community, and the easiest way for the community to see what we're doing, and in the end, that's probably all I care about. So that's, you know, that's my position.
Yeah, I guess that's why I asked for a documentation of how many issues that we've been having, because that wasn't, I wasn't aware that people were still not, that there were members of the public who wanted to attend meetings virtually, and they have not been able to. So staff is not aware of that. I'm not sure where that's, how we're not getting that information.
Lynn Arndorfer?
Yeah, I mean, my read is that the issues of, you know, based on Assistant Village Manager put together, it's the issues that we face for more to deal with the new interfaces and everything versus the system. So I'm fine with proceeding with Teams as we are. I mean, I use it at work all the time in various formats, various groups. Haven't had any real issues, there's a small learning curve, but I think it's preferable to staying the course versus bouncing back and forth. I, I would just say, you know, I mean, I dislike both Teams and Zoom equally. Can't say I have a favorite here. So, I mean, I really, I, I, can I, can I ask this question, or am I asking too much? What does staff prefer? Do you use Teams for all your meetings, or do you, what do you guys prefer? Or if you don't want to answer, that's okay, but.
I believe.
Chris?
Sure. Well, we don't have the Zoom account anymore, but yeah, I mean, the fact that Teams functionality with internal meetings does have a lot of other, you know, productivity features that we use, and I know even across the village, when I first came in, it's, it's something that was still pretty new for O365 and the fact that the village had it. So whenever we have quick hit meetings, the platform we use is Teams.
I think I also read that the server, it's, it's contained, so it's not the same level of work of downloading, editing, and then uploading to YouTube, so it's this, it's definitely less work for staff to use Teams. There are a lot of benefits from that, in that regard.
Director Johnson, you're relatively new, have you used anything other than, than Teams? Or in your experience, has Teams been working out well for you?
I have a background in both, don't really have a preference. They work both fine for me, so.
Okay. And Clerk Carol, would you say similar, or do you, would you say you have a preference? I'm sorry to put you on the spot, I just.
That's okay. I have a preference with Teams only from a minute-taking standpoint. Teams keeps track of who comes in and comes out of the meeting, so that I can log it. If it's a trustee that came in late, I can note it. I can also, it also keeps track of the spelling of people's names, which is very key for me during public comment.
Okay. Well, I, for me, I'd rather stick with Teams, so I'll just, rather than change it, even if we do it for just one year and then change back to Teams, to me, I think that, but then what would be the point? I just say, let's just stick with Teams, let's keep using it, make it work, and that's my, that's my last two cents.
And I would say if we, if it does not have votes to move forward, then I would say that if anyone on the board is aware of residents who are not able to join, to connect them immediately to staff, so that we can work with them to find out what's going on, to overcome that.
For anyone, for anyone who's just gotten on the call, if you could, if you're not a trustee, if you could just go off-screen and then also mute yourself, just so we don't have confusion, there you go, perfect, okay. We just didn't know, we had a number of people get on the call, okay.
All right, so last I checked, I don't think we have a majority to move this item forward, and I would like to move on to the next item.
Yep, number six, the Budget and Finance Committee had requested what the estimated increase was, about 1.67% or 90,000, additional 90,000 for capital, which was $40, an additional 130,000, which would be 2%, is an estimated increase of 48. Please note that these are only projections right now, in the balance of the next 45 days, we get all of our other finalizing numbers for adjustments. So getting that in the weeds in terms of specific dollar amounts can be hairy, but that's generally where it's at. So, right now, I'm looking for any direction or feedback that.
So to be clear, the, the budget that came before us is 0.95%. Staff is recommending levying at 2% to allow more to fall into, is it capital reserves or general reserves, or both?
Capital.
Capital. We are at a very, our capital reserves are lower than normal, and, and so it is anticipated that levying at 2% to allow more to fall into capital reserves will allow us to meet the rising cost of maintenance with the delayed replacement of the fleet. We will have trucks and cars on the road longer, and there will be more maintenance. So I'm just wanting to be very clear that that's what the ask is at this point. And I see trustee Stoke Brandon, and I guess I wanna, I just want to note, we are at time, although this is a very important discussion, so I'm not gonna limit it. But I do want us to focus and, and come to a conclusion. So trustee Stoke Brandon?
Thank you, I just, you said our reserves, so we're talking about 2024. So when you say our capital reserves are low, I guess I don't understand, we're talking about the budget for next year, so how are our capital reserves already low before we're even in that budget year?
So you only have right now around 50.
Reference a page number and a, like a line item where you're talking about?
Well, it's in the budget, I mean, we've gone through it, so.
Great, give me a page and an item number.
I don't have that in front of me, so George, you're gonna need to provide that, but in general, we have 50, we have $50,000 in capital reserves.
Page 112 or 113.
Typically, with a municipality of our size, having anything less than 200,000 in capital reserve is challenging, because one thing can go wrong, and you don't have anything to draw upon in order to address the situation.
Right, so it's.
And I don't see 112.
With all due respect, with all due respect, we did receive this in advance, and our job was to come prepared. So I don't know what the question is, that we are at, we've been given the amount that our capital reserves are at, we've been given an amount that is best practice. The reason why our capital reserves are low is that prices have increased, typically where we might end up with, you know, under budget. That is not the environment that we're in right now. And so the choice before the board is to levy to replace that level of, of reserves for the purposes, for the reasons that manager Ewald provided, or not.
I'm okay with the 2%.
I support 2%.
I do as well.
Hold on.
Trustee, was that trustee Arndorfer?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, trustee Kudo, trustee Stoke Brandon?
My, my position remains the same from the committee meeting, I don't, I don't support the increase.
You don't support levying for the capital reserves?
That's correct.
Okay.
Question or not, I'm only the Budget and Finance Chair, may I ask another question?
Trustee Stoke Brandon, you can ask your question, but the sarcasm not appreciated.
Is now a good time?
You may ask a question.
I had queried earlier about the large number of unassigned capital reserves in the budget, I believe it went up a million dollars. And I was looking for some guidance on that, why we're having, why we're budgeting. It used to be, I believe it was $5 million, and this year, we have a $6 million unassigned, not just unassigned reserves, and I'm wondering why we're increasing it by a million dollars when our, our total budget is only 13 million?
That projection.
This seems to be the sort of flexibility that would allow us, is this what we're counting on?
I had got that question back to you, probably like a, toward, a little towards the end of the day. I can get you an updated version of that spreadsheet, that, that spreadsheet is gonna continue to update until we get to the final number, as new numbers continue to come in, that number is not gonna continuously stay at that 6 million that you're seeing. It's been decreasing as we're plugging in our projected actuals for 2023. It's gonna draw that number down, it's not gonna stay at that 6 million.
So we'll have that number when we approve the final budget in November?
Yeah, correct, that you'll see a, a different version of that sheet in the, in the budget as it's revised.
Okay, I guess my feeling here is, you know, we're, to, to have that kind of money unassigned makes me uncomfortable. I mean, we're just approving $130,000 with no, no strings attached, and just saying, oh, we just want to make sure you have $130,000 to throw, to use where you need it. I think that we have enough professionals in this, in this village to come up with a specific assignment for those kinds of dollars, that's a big dollar amount, and so I cannot support it.
Okay, thank you. So, I think you've heard from everyone, so.
Last item. As you all know, interest rates are in a significant, have they significantly increased in this last year, so that does also have an impact on the budget. In 2022, we budgeted $230,000 for interest. We received $234,000, and 2023, we went forward again, just carrying that same number into 2023. At $230,000, at the end of quarter two, the village was just over $400,000. The draft budget includes the $400,000 in interest, and I just recognize we're in unprecedented territory, because I've never seen interest this high for many moons of my, my career, which has now been a while, so just kind of wanted to check in to ascertain whether there was any concern about using that 400, but just to call that to people's attention, that we're staying consistent with past practice and leveling, being conservative with our number and only moving that $400,000 forward. Because it's also an unknown.
And so that's advisement, not direction?
Well, just calling it out for purposes of information, you know, information. If you guys want to weigh in and direct us to do something different, you can at this time, but wanted to also share with you the approach.
Okay, thank you. Um, trustee Stoke Brandon?
Yeah, I would like to make sure that somewhere in the budget, and we don't have it right now, we don't have any money in here to improve pedestrian safety on West Capital Drive, and that's been brought up many, many times by many members of the village and committees. And I, I don't know why we just keep hitting a wall here, but I'm just hoping that we have ARPA money, we have Monsanto money, we now have interest money, and I would hope that when we finally get through the study from the state, when we find out that we can spend money on anything, I hope that we find the money, and that's why I would recommend that we leave, you know, ARPA money, we, we designate the Monsanto money, the first choice for the Monsanto money should be toward pedestrian safety improvements on Capital Drive, and if we have this windfall of interest money, that we should also peg that towards pedestrian safety on Capital Drive, because everybody else around us is doing a lot of improvements for pedestrian and bicycle safety, and right now, it's my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, we have no money set aside in 2024 to improve pedestrian safety on Capital Drive, other than we have a grant, we're hoping to get a grant from the county through the Safe Cities For All, or whatever, but we don't, that's, none of that is a done deal. Right now, we have nothing. We have a, we're gonna use money, $50,000 in ARPA money to pay for a study to go to the state, which will come back at the end of March. But right now, there's no money here, and I would just like a commitment from other village board members about the rest of the ARPA money, the Monsanto money, and you've got some interest money sitting here to put that toward pedestrian safety on Capital Drive.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, that concludes the list of items that we were asked to consider for this evening. And so with that, I would take a motion to adjourn the committee at the whole, followed by a five-minute bio break before starting the village board meeting.
I'm just looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, I'll do, sure.
Oh, okay.
I'll go to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Kudo, seconded by trustee Lynn. Are there any objections?
One.
Trustee Stoke Brandon? Okay, we are adjourned five to one at 7:43. Five-minute break, see you back here to adjourn, to convene.
Thank you.
Thank you.